Okay, let's go ahead and call Planning and Zoning to order. Can you do the roll call, Paul, please?
Megan. Brian. Brooks.
Here.
Rob. Alyssa. Mike.
Here.
Barb.
Here. All right, we have a quorum, we have approval of the agenda, please.
Motion to approve, this is Noam. Second, show them in.
Have a motion and second to approve the agenda, all in favor? Post, all right, and we have the consent calendar, a couple of plaques. Pages three, four, five, and six. A motion on those, please.
Tote second.
Motion and second to approve the consent calendar, all in favor? Post, all right, then we've got the minutes. On seven and eight, did you see anything? Alyssa's giving her approval, good job, guys. Okay, I've got a motion, we got a second?
Second, show them in.
Okay, motion and second for the minutes, it's always good to have a proofreader in the crowd, I think. All in favor? Post, all right. Now comes the time for public comments, if there's anyone out there that would like to address the commission on any issue, or if there's something that's coming up that you would like to talk about, you can wait and talk to us about it at that time, is anybody here with any public comments at this point? Okay, we've got a home occupation application for Trevino Lane. And do we have anyone here to speak to that? If you'd just come on up. We're pretty nice, we'll be, we'll be nice, if you just punch the button. Right there, and then give us your name and address, please, and just kind of tell us what you want to do. There we go, now it's on.
Then I gotta keep it pushed?
Nope, nope.
Okay. April Chase, twenty-fourth thirteen East Trevino Lane, Brandon, five seven zero zero five. And I was just kind of looking to have a daycare in my basement. And originally, it was just gonna be one child, and then plus my two, because I was really just gonna homeschool. And then I had some moms kind of talk to me about possibly having their littles come over after pre-K, so it wasn't ever gonna be anything big, maybe no more than eight, I would say, children. But I have, I'm still in the process of talking to a lawyer and trying to get my I's dotted and T's crossed, so I thought this would be the first place I would need to come to. And they actually found alternate childcare, because I wasn't gonna get approved until today, and she's actually a teacher, so she needed care before I could be approved, so she actually found alternate care. So as of right now, it's just my homeschool.
Well, we appreciate your trying to follow the rules, thank you very much, we appreciate that. What questions does the commission have?
So you kind of already described it, but you said in your application that your target is for five to possibly ten, that's your range that you're looking at potentially max?
Yeah, I would think by myself, I was hoping to hire possibly a helper or an assistant, just to, just to be there if the numbers are larger, you know, just to, um, yeah, have that extra help, but not even there yet, so I don't know if it'll come to fruition, but maybe.
And that was gonna be my other question, is if you intended to have anyone besides yourself working, so I think the ordinance allows one.
Yeah, I think so.
Part-time or full-time, so, yep, just be aware of that.
I just don't have an early childhood degree, and I would like to have possibly someone that does, or maybe a little bit more experience, because I do have some experience in childcare, but probably not enough to facilitate, you know, a preschool type, you know, like learning, the learning part of it.
Well, I think there's certainly a need for care, so I think if you just get the word out.
Yeah, and that's what the mom that had found alternate care, she said, do you, would you like me to tell my friends about this, and I'm like, well, you know, I'm gonna pray about it, and I'm gonna go to the, do all the things, like I have the list of things I would need to do first, so.
And it says on your application that your yard is fenced, so it is, so the kids go outside for whatever recess or playtime.
It is fenced.
I will move to approve.
Tote second.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second to approve, a new business in town. All in favor? Post, congratulations, best wishes, I'm sure you will fill up quickly, but thank you very much for following the procedure, we do appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, our next item is a rezone application for three hundred North Sunshine.
So three hundred North Sunshine is the address assigned to what would be the city of Brandon Valley School District, East Side Elementary School. Right now, it is an open field on the east side of town, it is currently zoned NRC. Their district they are seeking is institutional. I don't know, it doesn't look like anyone from the school is here.
And this was annexed already, right?
Correct.
Will we annex in the spring? Tote's move to approve the rezone.
This is a recommendation to the city council.
Tote's move to recommend to the city council?
Noam's second.
Yeah, a motion and a second to recommend the rezone, not a real controversial issue here, fortunately. All in favor? Post? Okay, got that done, all right, discussion items, the Hockey Association building signage, Patrick, take it away.
So Tom from Hockey is here, so.
Poor Tom, you've been sitting here since five fifteen.
So back in July, hockey came, I think, I think it was twenty twenty-three July, but sometime back then, they came in to get a variance about signage, so despite what it's named, Aspen Park Road in Aspen Park is not actually a road. So signage is based on your frontage, if you don't have a road, it's hard to have frontage, so the variance was granted to allow them to have signage as if Aspen Park Road was a frontage. So if you look at the little map in the packet, and it's, uh, I think, three to one, so if you look at that, the way it comes out, basically, they're capped at their two hundred. So Hockey has, they would like a, quite a bit more signage for their building, not only to be seen from the front, but from Highway eleven, Split Rock Boulevard, from the opposite side. So Tom, Tom's here to talk to you about that, kind of, we're just kind of gauging your appetite if you're interested in providing that to them, whether it's an ordinance amendment, whether it's a variance, if you have an appetite to do that. Park Board met half hour ago and talked about this, and they are, they have no issue with it, and they would recommend that you find a solution to allow them to have some amount more of signage.
And it's basically just based on the size of the building, it's such a big building.
That is likely what they would claim to be their hardship, based on where it is positioned on the lot. If, say you cut that number in half, and a hundred square foot signage from Split Rock Boulevard is kind of, it's still a little mini, it kind of defeats the purpose of the sign, but Tom's here to talk to you about that.
Yeah, come on up, Tom. Why don't you just give them a little information, what you told Park Board?
Uh, my name is Tom Grunick, nineteen oh one, South Orange Storm, the president of Brandon Valley Hockey Association. And it, the ordinance says a two hundred square feet for the building. We'd like to do two signs, one in the front, one in the back, just so we could get some coverage on the highway one hundred, or Highway eleven behind the building. And if we do that, then it drops the sign size down from ten by twenty, which is a hundred square feet. And it, it just doesn't look proportional to the building, and that's kind of why we did these renditions, to kind of see what it would take to make it look proportional to the building. And this is what it kind of does, it's, it's, we just need a little bit bigger sign. The two vertical signs are optional. I would probably just do a temporary permit for those, just have them up for six months and then pull them down, if we were gonna do that. The one in the middle is eight by twenty right now. And we would like a sign on the back, or, I'm sorry, the sign is, how big was it, Patrick?
When we talked, it was about five by twenty, but I think it's kind of a fluctuating number.
Yeah, and we're, we're not positive on what size we want, but the renderings that I got from him, sorry, I gotta bring it up, we've had quite a few of them. But the back one was eight by thirty-two, just to make it look proportional to the building, and then actually be able to see it from the highway. And it wouldn't be lit, the back, the back one wouldn't be, we would not light the back one, just for residential, there's houses back there, and we don't want to disrupt that.
So just for your reference, eight by thirty-two is two hundred and fifty-six square feet.
And that's what we were proposing on the backside, and that, that blows that number way out of the water already. And then the front one, I thought it was ten by something, I'll look it up quick, sorry. The one that you're showing in the middle is five by twenty. So a five by ten, it would, it would cut it in half. It just doesn't look right. And with the vertical lines, it could, that's what's the problem, I think, is the, the vertical lines kind of, that's, that's why you try to separate that. The two vertical banners, those, we just get temporaries for those. I don't think those would be permanent, that was just an option. It looks nice, but it's way over the signage. The thing too is, we're in a park, we don't want to, like, blow it out of the water, like, hey, this is where we're at, we want to be respectful of that area. But we're just kind of wondering if we get some guidance from Planning and Zoning in discussion, or does it matter? Because we're way over the two hundred.
Now, we do have a written comment from one of our commission members, Brian Hydebrink, and he is not in favor of increasing the signage limit, or changing the ordinance. So we do have a written comment from him. So Patrick, if, if the commission thought that they would be amenable to increase signs, I mean, how, how do you do it? I guess, what's the procedure?
I mean, it would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance, we'd have to figure out what it would be, would you add, would you have some combination of frontage and size of the building? Would we just increase the number? Would we eliminate the cap? I mean, there's a lot of potential options you could talk about from a variance standpoint. Back in July, either this year or the year before, whenever it was granted, you did find there was a hardship to allow signage of some manner. Whether that would carry over to another variance, you have found a hardship before. I, I don't know, it's kind of up to if you all want to, kind of, if you, if you want to stick with the cap and the way the ordinance is, because that's where you all spent time to write, or if you wanted to explore alternatives, we certainly can, I'm just looking for your, I'm looking for some direction.
The, the picture in there is actually just half the building, half the front of the building. You see the, the right block, that's so just to give you an idea, it's, it's a big building.
Just to make sure I heard it right, you said that that middle one, the one that reads straight across, that's five by twenty? So basically, that's a hundred, so.
That's two hundred.
I think that'd be a hundred.
So that's a hundred, so.
That's a hundred.
By the, by the max, currently, you could have two of those.
Correct.
And I, and I can see we're on the back, and that wouldn't be very visible, it probably wouldn't be worth putting up, I guess, with the, but anyway.
So I, I have a question about the school, we just put, we just voted to recommend that it go into institutional, I'm guessing there's gonna be words and stuff on the school. For example, like, the high school says, high school, there's the big picture of the links, you know, does that count as a sign?
Arguably, yes, that would count as a sign, so I imagine if, so the high school is currently zoned R-one, I believe, so it's probably out of compliance there.
Is it?
But even if they did rezone it to institutional, given the, the football field and everything else going on, I'm guessing they probably still have more than two hundred feet, square feet of signage.
They would be out of compliance.
Probably.
Okay, if, say if a structure like this just sticks each letter onto the building individually, like I think the high school said, Brandon Valley High School.
It's a cumulative total.
Yeah, do you measure the each letter, or do you draw an invisible outline around the letters and then measure that?
I imagine we would draw a box, probably. We're not gonna send Paul up there with a ladder and a measure too.
His calculator.
Yeah, mathematically, a person could, but, but yeah, I understand. So two, two hundred is what they would be allowed under current ordinance?
Correct, there is a cap on wall signage, but not necessarily on freestanding.
There's not a cap on freestanding.
So that's, that's my understanding. I, I could pull it open and look, but that's my understanding, and to keep in mind, the institutional district also applies to things like city hall, and churches, schools, and everything else. So there is other things in the institutional district as well.
So if there's not a cap on, like, a freestanding sign, I'm just, an example, they could put one on the back, freestanding.
Freestanding institutional shall be permitted so long as their cumulative total area for a lot does not exceed one square foot for one foot of a lineal street.
So their difference there is, it's not the three to one, it's the one to one, and it's roughly a hundred and forty-three if you take the, where the cul-de-sac ends and divide it by half, roughly, we didn't measure it officially, but.
Okay, so, I've had a long day, what, what would that give them, then, if they, for a freestanding?
So a freestanding, they could have a hundred and forty-three square feet for the lot.
In addition to the two hundred?
Wall.
Wall, yeah, okay. Okay, two hundred plus a hundred and forty-three.
Yes, there is no cap on the freestanding, so if they had, if their lot was, had a mile of frontage, they would potentially have a, that many square feet of signage, so there's no cap, but they just, they're limited by the frontage, one to one, if the road were extended the full length of the lot, I mean, you could, they would have two eighty-six.
So what you're looking for, Patrick, is, um, you know, with, what to, what to write if they are in favor of increasing the amount?
Yes, are you interested in increasing the amount, or is it your opinion that the rules are the rules, and that's just what it is? Are you interested in pursuing an alternative? I'm just trying to figure out where to go from here, this is just a discussion, it's nothing you can vote on or anything today, we're just trying to, we don't want to waste everyone's time by submitting, you know, five different proposals and taking two and a half months.
But we can keep, we can keep the ordinance as is, and then each applicant would come if they want to go above what the ordinance states as a variance. But each one would have to prove a hardship, then, in order to qualify for a variance.
Correct.
Part of my concern with institutional is they're almost always surrounded by residential. There's very few institutional that don't have, I mean, because that's what they are, they're, they're usually zones that are there to support the neighborhood, so.
This lot would have some R-one to the east of it, there are those houses along Highway eleven.
And then there's a new development going west of it that it's a ways away, and I'm not, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying caution of, that's my, my caution, is that they are still surrounded by residential, it's not a industrial park type situation, so. And a little bit of the advertisement is just the building itself. That's just, that's my, that's my hesitation, I guess.
Yeah, and I hear what you're saying, but a little sign on that huge building is just gonna look silly. And they've spent so much money on that facility, I would hate for it to just look like goofy thing.
You go to Sioux Falls and look at, like, the match point, the Huther, kind of, that's a big, that's a big sign on that building. And it looks proportionate to the building.
Yeah.
Just for an example.
It's just the letters, it's not a, there's no background on it, it's just a, but it's, still, it's, if you drew a box around it, pretty big, yeah.
But that wouldn't be by residential area, to Mike's point, yeah.
If they want, you know, I think there'd be certainly a, a reason to have a a distinction between lit signs and not lit signs, you know. If we wanted to consider if they're not lit, that it could be a, like, a percentage of the building, or something like that, if you wanted to go that route. My, my concern is that if, if it's something that affects those around, but it, but just a sign, I can see why that wouldn't have the same effect, I just I think of, like, Seinfeld and Kenny Rogers Chicken, you know. I, I could see how it could easily impact the people around there if, if there wasn't a.
Well, we had that issue with the fitness, that fitness center on Split Rock, and the people across the road, it was bothering them, the light was coming in.
Yeah, I kind of understand.
That one wasn't necessarily because of our business.
No.
The sign was, it's just because it was too bright.
Is there somewhat, anyone here that wanted to address this issue? Nope, okay, just double checking.
I understand your, you know, kind of the concerns about the potential for these being close to residential areas. But also, kind of, you know, this kind of does illustrate to me that in institutional, these buildings are gonna be potentially sizable, as this one is, and I was wondering if, if a first thought I had is whether we could keep the formula as it is, but maybe look at that maximum of two hundred square feet, and adjust that a little bit, because that's what this come out to, when by the three, three square feet per one foot of frontage, the number would be higher, right? But it hits the maximum of two hundred square feet, if I'm reading that correctly?
Roughly four twenty-nine, if you took the one forty-three, but times three, two four, four twenty-nine.
When most people come in for signs, are they hitting their max? I mean, I mean, you don't know exactly, are they, are they all pretty?
I imagine most strip malls probably do, because they had to divide it up, so that each sign ends up a little smaller, but.
But, but other than strip malls, it, it probably doesn't max out. We don't really get a lot of complaints about this number. And that's in commercial districts, too. And I'm thinking about institutional, if you have schools in there. I'm like, we, like, we just mentioned that the high school, for example, would be out of compliance. Maybe the middle school, maybe all, you know, and I don't know what, if the city at municipal parks has ever run into signage problems either. Because there's signs at the parks, and so maybe.
If we looked into it, we probably would.
Yeah.
Well, that might be a good compromise to keep the formula, but take off the maximum, that's what you suggested, right?
Or, or even just look at maybe increasing that maximum a little bit, I mean, I don't know that I want it to be unlimited either. So I was thinking maybe it could be, we could raise that ceiling on the max a little bit.
And I think Mike had a good, good point about whether the sign is lighted or not lighted, I think that makes a difference. I would hate to leave it up to coming in for a variance request, because I can't see situations where there would be a hardship. I think that would be really difficult to.
And even if we said, you know, this kind of runs into a little problem, because things can change, but if you said that, you know, you can't have, or you can, you can only have so much light, or something towards residential, but if it's facing away from residential, but then you get into areas where they're developing it, and that changes, then that gets to be a problem, too.
Could depend on what materials the sign is made out of, too. I mean, I'm sure you've all been in a restaurant where the sun hits the windshield of the car and blinds you, you know, so. It'd almost make a difference on what material the sign is made out of also, but.
Thinking back to what we, you know, since we're not deciding anything here today, so I would, I would, I guess, by what I've already said, I've indicated that I think I'm open to a discussion of making adjustment to this in some way.
Um, would you're driving down Highway eleven, or you can be able to see the sign on the backside of the building, or does it need to be higher than the building for that? I mean, I can envision it.
No, you could, you could drive along, and you can see the back of the building, and that sign would be the proposal, we're proposing eight by thirty-two, just to be proportional to the building, so it makes it look appealing, and then we would not light it towards the residence. And it's just a panel with a vinyl color on it.
It's just, it's hard to have a discussion looking at, and I know that, you know, we can say we can do it one at a time, it's just if you come and you get a bigger sign, the next guy's gonna want a bigger sign and light it, and then, you know, and that's just, that's my.
I totally agree, and, and we're also down in the park area, and I, I get that as well, but we want to be respectful, but we also want it to look proportional, and not look like a, a thumbtack on a a huge billboard.
Yep.
Yeah, and what Mike said is exactly right, when, when we get these questions for a conditional use or variance or something, we not only look at what the applicant is asking for, but we consider how that would be for everybody in the whole town. You know, different locations, different owners, different buildings.
Could we look at it like a hardship because of the size of the building? It's, it's just so big that putting a smaller side wouldn't look proportional to it.
A hardship can't be something that you created, though, and, but, I mean, I, I get where you're coming from, and I just, I'm kind of seeing with caution, but I, I get the question.
This doesn't even include, like, a rake sponsor, like, their logo or their sign on it as well, it's just what we would like to have, to let people know this is an ice rink down here, you know.
I was thinking, I've noticed the building from driving on the east side of it, and I threw the houses there, and, and thinking about that sign, I was just thinking, yeah, if I was from out of town and coming to the hockey game for the first time, that might help, because I very, very well may go right past that, so.
That's exactly why I was thinking about that, you know, and then when we started the, the conversation of. That's exactly what I was thinking about, you know, and, and we started the, the conversation of the size, and then we were like, whoa, we just blew this out of the water, like, certain exit options, and now we're, that's why, sorry to be such a bird on you guys, but we just, we need to do some guidance. That's all, I don't know how to proceed. If you wanted to keep it in place, that's fine, we'll just have to deal with it, but, uh.
You can have like signage for directions and stuff that doesn't count against it, right?
Correct, so, like, how, if you drive west towards town, you'll see there's like a McCarty soccer field sign on a pole that take the, you would make a left turn for it, there could be those kind of signage, if it's on the street right of way, you need to get approval from the public works department.
But those green signs that.
We generally limit the size of them, they're not gonna be massive signs.
Those green signs at the entrance that say, "Ocular Hospital," or whatever.
Yeah, on, um, Split Rock, we'd have to get approved by the state.
Correct.
Is not always easy.
Yep.
Well, what would you like Patrick to work, work on, if anything?
I mean, if we need five different options, we can start with five options and just tweak slightly and give different options, whatever, wherever you want to start, if you want to start.
I was just looking at our permitted uses, cause we're talking about, at the moment, the institutional zone, so, house of worship, library school, cemetery, government building, or facility, public park, and then utility facilities and electric substation, and then the conditional uses of water treatment facility, public sports venue, event center, public recreation facility. So I think for me, I still think that potentially looking at raising that maximum square footage, to me would be something I could, I'd like to discuss, but there could be other options. There could be no interest, but that's my opinion.
And you're saying it would just be for the institutional zone? I think Brian's concerned that it could, um, spread to other zones, but I think you can, you can hold, you can hold that tight if you want to.
That's specifically what I was thinking about, is institutional, cause it's a different zoning for a reason, and the things that are in there are, you know, different. So yeah, I, I was thinking institutional.
Could we make that a conditional use, if it's over two hundred square feet, then we could, we could look at it and say, you know, no lights, or, or how it affects the surrounding, things like that.
Yep.
And we already have, uh, like for freestanding signs, or e- or signs on top of buildings, we have a height requirement already, rank eight limits?
I think so. The, probably if it's next to residential or not, might limit the height.
An institutional for freestanding, they shall not exceed thirty feet in height above grade. However, signs located less than five hundred feet from a residential zone district shall not exceed eighteen feet above grade.
Haven't we spent hours on signs over the years?
Hey, we spent a half an hour try, discussing the difference between abutting and
adjoining.
Adjoining one time, you know? It's.
Do you know how far you are from the residential on the backside there?
Uh, the building, I'm not sure, but we're, we're budded up, the property is budded up to residential. The, yes, but I don't know how far away the building is from those lots.
But if they're gonna see the building, I don't know that the sign's gonna, as long as it's not lighted, it's gonna make much difference, cause they got this big building that they're looking at anyway.
Current zoning just, if it, if it's within five hundred feet of residential, then they can only be eighteen feet high, so, how tall is it?
That's what, yeah, that's for freestanding.
So they're prob- probably right where the N is on the map there, they're probably right in here. I mean, just eyeball on it, they're probably right in here somewhere.
Is that for freestanding or on a building?
So that's the freestanding.
Okay, okay. So on the building, you could be, uh?
You can project above a little bit.
Roof and projecting institutional, roof and projecting signs may not be located higher than five feet above the building's roof line.
I think that, that, that conditional use idea, I think has merit too, because they get the ability to assess a particular use and situation, so I, I, that's a good suggestion as well, I'd, like, I would happily discuss that too.
So does that give you enough, Patrick? Is there anything over here on the left side of the table that wants to be added?
We will have a draft to discuss on the nineteenth.
Okay, okay, we'll try to work with you, John. Okay. Thank you, okay, um, anything else on that topic then, Patrick?
Not unless Tom has something.
Thanks for your patience, appreciate it. Okay, fence requirements, more fences?
So, as exciting as I'm sure drainage easement fences sound.
Yeah, fascinating.
So this is kind of a topic the city engineer wanted to talk about, but she got kind of an emergency call that some contractor was sawing something in half they shouldn't. So she had to go out in the field, so she requested that we postpone this to the nineteenth.
Oh, yeah. I think I, I think I should be gone. I gotta, I gotta juggle my schedule better these days. Yeah, okay, then we have, okay, so we're gonna postpone that, then we have the building permits, anything outstanding there we should? Nope.
I like the inclusion of the, uh, multifamily dwelling units, that's nice.
I do too.
Yeah.
Hundred and forty-five multifamily units.
Wow.
So far this year.
Yep, compared to two last year, and we're at thirty single family homes compared to ten last year.
So a hundred and seventy-five families? Figure what? What do you figure, two and a half people per, per unit?
Probably, yeah.
So seventy-five, hundred and fifty, closer to two hundred people. So far this year.
Correct, I want to say last year we had maybe twenty single family home permits, so we're, we're already above last year. So, we're doing good there, definitely doing better on multifamily.
Yeah, that's great.
And most of these are the Aspen Ridge apartments for the one forty-five, the, there are other ones in the works as well.
Okay, um, anything else for the betterment of the group? Not take a motion to adjourn?
Totally so much.
Oh, I was just wondering, there are a couple of folks in the audience who.
Anything you wanted to add, folks?
No, okay.
You guys get to get a life. We're, but you're always welcome to come, anytime, so, okay, all right.
Uh, a second.
All right, we got a motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor. All right, okay, we're, we're out of here, folks, thank you.
It is seven oh eight PM, we are adjourned.